Good evening tonight. It is actually January the seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. We're so thankful for all of you for being here tonight. Happy New Year to all of you who we hadn't had an opportunity to speak to. We wanna, we got a new board up here tonight, so we wanna welcome Commissioner Stan Edwards. This is his third term, I think, third term. Commissioner Demond Mason is his second term. Commissioner Stephanie Lynn's her first term. Commissioner J.C. Henderson. I don't know what term it is, but I think he got like twenty-nine years, if I'm not mistaken, or thirty.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, twenty-seven years. Wow. And Commissioner District Five, Ms. Leann Long. So we wanna take this time to say welcome to all of you and Happy New Year to all of you. Tonight, we are here, we have a special guest, and I am Chairman Baines. This is my third term, and so we welcome you tonight. Have a special guest with us, the chaplain, the bishop. He has so many titles, Bishop T. Demetrius Smith. If you would, please come on up, sir. He's one of the chaplains over at Newton County Sheriff's Office along with pastor's church, and he do so many community things, and I thought it would be great to have him to come tonight to give us our invocation. Following him, we will have Newton County Fire Guard tonight. They're gonna do the colors. And so we wanna, it's, you know, we just lost Jimmy Carter, one of our president, and a man that did so much for this, for this world. And so we're just so thankful to have Bishop tonight, and I know he'll remember that in his prayers. He bless, he bless our county for this year. It's in your hands, sir.
All right, well, thank you, thank you, sir. And thank this Board of Commissioners. And again, Happy New Years to everyone. Thank y'all so much. As we go to the Lord in prayer, let us, let us pray together. Heavenly Father, we are gathered here today, and we come before you with grateful hearts to thank you for this opportunity to serve our community and for the guidance that you provide in your decision as we decide together. We ask for your wisdom tonight to fill this room and illuminate our minds and our hearts as we discuss matters that impact our county and our nation. We pray for these your leaders here tonight, and we pray for these your people who come now to hear and get clarity and understanding of why we here and the purpose of why we here. So we ask for your peace and your love and your joy tonight. And again, God, we pray for our world tonight, God, that there would be great peace and understanding in our world. We thank you for our Savior, Jesus Christ, and all that you are doing for us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Can you all stand, please, for the?
Go, left hand, shoot. Carry, go. Right, face. Forward, arm. Forward, arm. Left, face. Present, arm.
To the flag of the United States of America. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, arm. Code, post. Prepare, post. Post. Re-cover. Ready, face. Present, arm. Order, arm. Ready, foot. Right, face. Forward, mark.
Thank you, Bishop Smith, and thank you to the Newton County Color Guard. At this time, we want to, I will seek a motion that we adopt the agenda, please.
So move.
Is there a second? This is a motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five-oh. Thank you so much. Next is unfinished, I'm sorry, next is the citizens' comments. This opportunity that we allow citizens to make comments about agenda topics only. You have three minutes to do so. You may come at this time. Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Happy New Year to y'all.
Happy New Year to you.
Dave Norton, four-three-five-seven, Highway one forty-two, newborn. No, I haven't moved yet. We have some zoning agendas tonight, and so I would like to repeat a few things that I've said over the past year. In the standards of review of the Newton County zoning ordinance, the current Newton County zoning ordinance and the Newton County Development Regulations, both state the purpose of the board is to protect and promote the public health, moral, safety, and general welfare of the county. Division six hundred, section six-two-zero-zero-six-zero of the Newton County zoning ordinance states the board to review the population density patterns and possible increase or overtaxing of the load on public facilities, including but not limited to schools, utilities, and streets. I'm sure y'all knew that all there already. I just refreshing your memory. There's a quote, I can't remember the entire quote, especially can't remember who to credit it to. But each year is an open book, and we get to write those pages this year. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Please state your name and your address for the record, please. You have three minutes to do so.
Maya Allen Neely, District Three. I too am going to repeat some things that have been said in past meetings in regards to specifically to an appeal for development on Fairview Road. They already have a development across the street. Those rentals are twenty-four-hundred to a twenty-eight-hundred, and they were initially stated that they were gonna be for sale, and there was nothing in our ordinances that stopped them from making them rentals. That cannot be sustained. It may be okay today, but it cannot be sustained at those rates. And we don't need another seventy-odd rental homes developments in that area. So I implore you to again deny on behalf of not only Newton County District Three, but the entire Newton County as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please state your name and your address for the record, please. You have three minutes to do so.
Good evening. She Lee's Initiative Government Affairs. The Newton County Board of Commissioners has adopted Robert Rules of Order as a parliamentary procedure in their documents. This adoption is outlined in the Newton County Rules for Conduct of Business, which can be found on the official Newton County website. Resolution R. one-two-zero-two-four, implementation of District Three initiatives, which was passed to table by this board, has not been placed on unfinished business. That implementation was in regards to protect District Three projects, which was brought to me by former Chairman Lanier Sims, who also had his pass in two thousand and eighteen. When the Board of Commissioners vote to table, this comes from parliamentary procedure, Robert Rules of Order. When the Board of Commissioners vote to table an agenda item for the next meeting, the appropriate place is under unfinished business. If the item was tabled and is intended to be discussed at the next meeting, it would typically appear under unfinished business on the next agenda. The item is currently missing. I'm also speaking in regards to item number eleven, C. Covetown Creek. When I sat here and we actually approved, well, it wasn't approved, the resident actually stated, the applicant stated that they're only gonna build homes, residential homes. Then they came back years later and stated they wanna build rentals. When I reached out to our Development Services Director, she said because we had nothing in place, that's one of the reasons why they switched over. It was denied to build rental homes when they wanna build additional fifty homes by this board. So I implore you all to do the same for eleven C. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Chairman's Report. I don't have anything tonight. Mr. County Manager, you have anything in your report?
I do, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Thank you, Board members, and thank you residents. I come before you with the County Manager's Report, and again, Happy New Year. As always, we're gonna focus on the people, and today, we're gonna talk about our infrastructure workforce team. We'll start with Development Services and the work that they do, and we're gonna take a three-month snapshot at the permits, business licensing, zoning applications, planning and development applications, and total revenue collected. When you look at the applications processed and the permits, on average, that's a hundred and four per month. When you look at permits issued, you're looking at just under a hundred and four a month. When you look at revenue collected in that section, we're looking at just under a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. When you go to the business licensed component, pardon me, you're looking at approximately twenty-four new licenses issued. When you look at license renewals, you're looking at about a hundred and sixty-one licenses that were renewed. And when you look at revenues collected in that area, you're looking at about twenty-three thousand dollars or so. When you look at the zoning applications process, you're looking at approximately seventeen applications. When you look at the revenue collected there, it's just under twenty-nine hundred dollars. When you look at planning and development applications process, we're looking at about nine applications processed per month. You're looking at the revenue collected there, we're looking at approximately sixty-nine hundred dollars a month. And when we look at the total revenue in Development Services, it is a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars during that monthly cycle, or monthly average cycle, pardon me. When we look at public works and the work orders that are being performed, when you look at District One on average from a monthly basis, that's about a hundred and twenty-nine work orders that we've went out to assess. When you look at District Two, that's just at eighty-five work orders a month assessed. When you look at District Three, approximately sixty-six work orders assessed. When you look at District Four, approximately seventy-three work orders that were assessed. When you look at District Five, you're looking at approximately ninety-one work orders assessed. And when you look at the total work orders assessed from, on a monthly basis, we're looking at four hundred and thirty-four work orders performed by staff of forty-seven full and part-time staff. And when you look at the overall work orders, we did about thirteen hundred work orders completed across the county during that last quarter of two thousand and twenty-four. And again, that's with forty-seven full and part-time staff. When you talk about our cleanup crew, we picked up nearly forty-two hundred bags of trash and took in about forty-three tons of trash to the landfill. In addition to that work duty and responsibility, we look at the resurfacing and paving done by that department, and approximately twenty-five miles of roadway were resurfaced or paved during that calendar year of two thousand and twenty-four. When we look at road building and dirt road paving projects, approximately four and a half miles. And in particular, that initiative took place at Waters Bridge Circle, Benton Dairy Road, Davis Ford Road, Malcolm Road, Ray Road, Bohannon Road. There were major covert replacements on Benton Dairy Road and Cooper Road completed in the calendar year as well in two thousand and twenty-four. And additionally, point-six miles of the Cricket Frog Trail have been paved to newly rehabilitated bridge. Our Fleet Services, they completed about twenty-two hundred-plus work orders during the calendar year of two thousand and twenty-four. This averages about forty-four work orders completed weekly. When we talk about vehicles that were purchased, seventeen new trucks and heavy equipment, five tractors, three bush hogs, one motor grader, two Caterpillar skid steers, one roller, two dump trucks, one gravel truck, one used bucket truck, and one rollback wrecker. When we talk about Department of Transportation, completed projects, roundabout construction completed at Kirkland Road and Jack Neely Road, intersection improvements at Dobbs Road and Crowell Road, bridge replacement completions, Brown Bridge Road at Snappy Shoals Creek, bridge rehab completed, Cricket Frog Trail at Alcovia River. And there are currently eight additional major road and bridge construction projects currently in the engineering or construction phase that we're looking at as well. And then, of course, the two engineering studies in the initial phases, comprehensive transportation plan and the road safety plan. Water resources. We continue to monitor our water, make sure that it is safe. The most recent test occurred on December third, and the results of that testing cycle reported as zero in terms of contaminated water, and that's been the running average since we've taken on this task. Solid waste. The calendar year, nearly fifty-four hundred hang tags have been sold to residents in Newton County. And at the end of the November month, we had a routine compliance inspection conducted, and we are in good standings, and we had an evaluation of one hundred. This concludes my County Manager's Report.
Thank you so much, sir. Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. C. And what I want to ask was, you know, and I understand you said it was zero, I guess, carcinogens. So last meeting, I asked the same question, and so what you're telling me that there's no PFAS in the water, forever chemicals in our water at all for the last two months? And it's the County Manager Cooper.
What I'm telling you is that there's zero PFAS detected in our testing cycles in December. And if we need to continue with this conversation via town hall or you need the water professionals present, I'd be more than willing to set that up for you, sir.
And thank you. And it's very considerate of you. Only thing I'm asking is to show me something, and I'm asking the County Manager, assuming I'm supposed to go through.
Right.
Is to give me something in writing saying that there's no forever chemicals in our water.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. County Manager, do, you may, may not have this answer right off the top of your head. The Notify Newton app that people use, are those included in the work orders that are counted when you give this report?
Yes, they are.
Okay, good deal. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you. Before we go to unfinished business, I do see our newly elected county coroner in his office in here tonight, Ms. Kimble Griggs, if you would wave your hand. Yep. Hopefully, y'all do not have to use her, but if you do, yeah, yeah. You don't have to use her services, but she is here tonight. Next is unfinished business. I seek a motion, please.
It's added to the consent agenda.
No. Unfinished business and then consent agenda.
These will be considered under the consent agenda because they changed the names.
No, but we gotta do the old first and then get to the new.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So yeah, I seek a motion, please. Ask again, I seek a motion. All right.
What do you want him to do?
Whatever they, whatever they please.
See, if he's retaped, he's retaped.
I know. So, Commissioner Henderson, go ahead.
The question I have is, is I know you, you know, County Clerk, Ms. Jackie Smith, who we all love, y'all having a conversation, could you kind of share that conversation? Because we're all in a public meeting, share that conversation. And then, what exactly is, are you asking for is the motion?
Well, the conversation is this is unfinished business, and we're seeking a motion whether you guys wanna approve these appointment that you guys, I guess, tabled back on December the third.
These are not approved.
Yeah.
These are the ones that are approved.
So they got to make a motion.
So move.
So a motion needs to be made whether y'all wanna approve the names that y'all tabled on December the third. So we need a motion. So move. Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? That motion failed for?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, that motion failed for lack of support. Next, we're on the consent agenda.
Yeah, now, thank you, honey.
I seek a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Long. I know we do have one name that we need to remove from, and that is Ms. Caroline Cowan, District Five. Caroline Cowan, District Five. But as we always say, if your name is on this agenda tonight and you are being approved to serve on the board, if you don't mind, would you please stand? We do wanna take this opportunity to thank you guys for your commitment that you have made to this community, and we greatly appreciate your service that you are giving to this county. Thank you so much.
Can we be clear if you made that motion?
Commissioner Mason made the motion, and Commissioner Long seconded that motion.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five-oh. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, we have the next item on the agenda under new business, item number ten. We have our County Manager, Mr. Patrick Jogstetter, regarding resolution number R., as in Robert, zero-one-zero-seven-two-five. And this resolution is requesting the introduction of local legislation amending an act that created the Newton County Public Facilities Authority.
Thank you so much, guys, and we do wanna give your heads up because I know this may take a little time, that at seven-thirty, we moved directly into zoning. So if we cut Patrick off, we'll be going directly into zoning at seven-thirty. Mr. Jogstetter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Happy New Year to all of you. As you are all probably aware, back in two thousand and twenty, Newton County Public Facilities Authority was created by the General Assembly of the State of Georgia. By virtue of your service on the Board of Commissioners, you also serve as a member of the Newton County Public Facilities Authority. The reason that authority exists is to serve primarily as a financing conduit for the county. The county only has so many ways it can borrow money to build projects. You can do general obligation bonds, which are extraordinarily expensive and take a lot of time because you have to go have a public referendum on them. You can do revenue bonds, and that is for projects that generate revenue. Or you can do what we call these local authority bonds. The Public Authority, Public Facilities Authority, when it was created, it was created for the express purpose of financing only those projects for which you could also do a, a revenue bond for. It was limited to only revenue bond projects. As you are also all probably aware, at this moment, the county and the city of Covington are working towards an expansion of the emergency management facility, the E-nine-one-one center. We have determined, and that's through a working group that includes both your financial advisors, the city's financial advisor, advisors, Mr. Cooper and his staff, and the city management staff, that the best way to finance that project would be by use of the Public Facilities Authority. The city of Covington is also undertaking some public improvements, which I think relate primarily to some drainage and sewer improvements, that they could also, if the Public Facilities Authority's purposes are expanded, utilize the Public Facilities Authority for. The way that would work is the Public Facilities Authority is basically a flow-through for the financing. We're not really loaning money, we're not really borrowing money, we're just in the middle between the borrower and the lenders. In order, however, to take advantage of those financing opportunities, it is necessary that the General Assembly expands the ability of the public finance, public finance authority to operate. And before you is a resolution that would request that the General Assembly do just that. It's a local act of the General Assembly, it's not a general law, and the way local acts are introduced and presented and processed is by request typically from the local government. So we are asking that the Board of Commissioners request that your local legislative delegation produce, present during this upcoming session of the General Assembly, a local act to amend the act that created the Public Facilities Authority. And it would authorize the Public Facilities Authority to undertake and finance all buildings, facilities, and equipment necessary or convenient for the efficient operation of Newton County or any department, agency, division, or commission. or any department, agency, division, or commission thereof. So, essentially, any county facility. It would also authorize us to work with the school district if we so choose, so it would authorize the Public Facilities Authority to assist in financing Newton County's school district projects, and any project undertaken by municipal corporation within Newton County in addition to any undertaking authorized by the revenue bond law. So, what we're doing is we're allowing the Public Facilities Authority to reach out and finance projects that would not otherwise be able to be financed through the existing authority. This is a fairly typical, common practice. Most public facilities authorities, when they are created, are created to expand beyond the revenue bond law. And what that allows you to do is it allows you to leverage the government finance opportunities that are in the marketplace to the fullest extent. So, ultimately, this will make your borrowing endeavors less expensive. It will typically make them less expensive to get upfront because there's significant issuance cost on these bonds. It will also allow you to take advantage of better interest rates available to government entities. I would recommend you approve this, so we can put it into the hands of your legislative delegation at the earliest possible opportunity, so they can get it presented during the session of the General Assembly. I'm happy to answer any questions. We've got about two and a half minutes.
Any questions, Commissioner Henderson?
So, if this is approved by our delegation, who would be our representative?
So, what, if the board approves a resolution tonight, I will forward it to all of the members of the legislative delegation. And what they typically do when they, when session starts, is the delegation will elect from among themselves a chair. I don't know that they've done that yet, but once they've elected among themselves a chair of the delegation, that will be the member of the General Assembly that'll sort of push it through typically.
So move. Let's get a motion, so we can get it. It's been a motion by Commissioner Henderson. Is there a second?
Second.
And second by Commissioner Mason. Discussion. I think Commissioner Edwards will first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I realize we're short on time. So, Patrick, in your opinion, this, this authority, coupled with our outstanding financial position at the moment, would that further enhance our ability for the lower, the lowest of the interest rates? If, should we need to borrow money?
Yes, yes, it should. It should reflect in a savings when you undertake these proceedings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think Commissioner Lindsay was next. Guys, it's actually seven-thirty. So, we're gonna come back to, after zoning, we're gonna come back to this. Ms. Applewhite, if you would, please come on, come on up. Write down your questions, and we'll be back shortly to that. Good evening again.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. And we have a total of three petitions this evening. The first two are old business. They were initially heard back in November and tabled by the board pending an updated review in regards to access points for the project from G dot. And this time, the applicant, nor myself, we have not gotten that preliminary review back as yet. And the applicant is requesting through the board to table these cases. Until they can get that information, they're asking, it will be for sixty days if the board does agree to that, to allow for time to re-advertise and so on. And this will be for case number REZ-two-four-dash-zero-zero-zero-zero-seven, and the companion case, CUP-twenty-four-dash-zero-zero-zero-zero-nine, which was a convenience store and retail outlets at Highway thirteen-one, thirteen South Highway two-twelve. District.
So, yeah, I wasn't here, so have y'all had a public hearing on all of that?
We did, in November.
Okay, okay.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, we had a public hearing and everything already, and the board tabled requesting additional information, which in essence would have been to hear from G dot in terms of the access points for this project.
Okay, and this is district?
One.
One.
This is one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we table at the applicant's request rezoning REZ-two-four-zero-zero-zero-zero-seven.
Is there a date?
Oh, for sixty days, if you don't mind.
I'm sorry?
For sixty days, you ask how much time?
Sixty days, yes. Okay. Commissioner Edwards has made a motion that we table this for sixty days. Is there a second? Commissioner Long seconded it. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor? Stand table, five oh. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm just gonna skip down to the next. Our second petition this evening is an appeal case, so it's APP-twenty-four-dash-zero-zero-zero-seven. The name of the applicant for this appeal is Michael Dowtry, and the representative today is John Nix.
Ms. Applewhite, we, they did, they only voted the zoning to table the zoning case. They need to go now and vote.
I'm so sorry.
To the cup, yes.
Mr. Chairman, motion to table conditional use permit, CUP-two-four-zero-zero-zero-zero-nine, for sixty days.
Sixty days. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards, and second by Commissioner Mason. All right, is there any discussion? All in favor? Stand table for sixty days. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Again, our next petition is the appeal case, APP-twenty-four-dash-zero-zero-zero-seven. The original case number was preliminary plat-twenty-four-dash-zero-zero-zero-zero-nine, and the original applicant was the same, Michael Dowtry. Our property owner is Covington Creek Holdings LLC, by Michael Dowtry as well. And the address to the property is thirty-four eighty Fairview Road, tax ID zero-zero-two-five-zero-four-four. The proposed use is a single-family residential development. The existing zoning is R-two, single-family residential. It's in the Almond Overlay, tier is one, and a small part is in tier two. We're in the Yellow River watershed, in the established suburban core and livework corridors, carter areas. The proposed density is two-point-five-nine units per acre, and the size is seven-to-one lots with twenty-nine-point-zero-five total acres. And this is in Commissioner District Three. And the appeal request is to appeal the planning commission's decision to deny the preliminary plat extension, which would have been PPP-twenty-four-dash-zero-zero-zero-zero-nine for the Covington Creek Springs. So, this plat was originally approved back in two thousand twenty-two, and I will go through a little later some of the challenges that were experienced, which caused a delay and pushed their timetable out, hence the request today. And as mentioned before, the property is twenty-nine-point-zero-five acres, and they're proposing seven-to-one lots. In a brief history, on October twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four, the planning commission tabled this petition, and on November thirteenth of two thousand twenty-four, the planning commission denied the preliminary plat extension for Covington Creek Springs. And these are the carter areas, as mentioned before. And they are included in your petition packet, so I won't read through in detail. But it is the established suburban core, and the proposed land use as well as the zonings are appropriate. And it also have the livework corridor, which is the same, which isn't allowed use in this carter area. And just a bit of background, based on the location of Fairview Road, it's going to be a single-family residential subdivision. The preliminary plat analysis, we staff did a review, you know, in reference to Section four-six-zero and Section fourteen-fifteen-zero-three-zero of the Unified Development Ordinance. And in reviewing this, while we anticipate that there will be an increase in traffic because it's a new subdivision, we did not find, when all the departments reviewed, there were no substantial potential, you know, that adverse effects that a subdivision would bring. And we do have comments included from the planning commission meeting. There was opposition on October twenty-second, and concerns raised included homes that were going to be rentals, you know, potentially causing property values of owner-occupied homes in neighboring subdivisions to decrease. There were also concerns regarding the subdivision's density and the rock blasting that occurred during the LDP phase, as well as the pending update of the Unified Development Ordinance. Recommended conditions. A developer experienced considerable challenges with the rock that had to be blasted and properly disposed of. This created delays in the timeline, and they have been making progress on the ground, and they're requesting a twelve-month extension to complete the ground preparation and stabilization, as well as do the final plat. And in reviewing the items for the Newton County Unified Development Ordinance of the above sections mentioned, which deals with the effect of the preliminary plat approval, should the board approve this preliminary plat extension, it should be subject to the following conditions. The preliminary plat shall be extended for twelve months in order to stabilize the ground and complete installing and necessary infrastructure. The final plat for a phase or for the entire subdivision shall be approved within twelve months of any preliminary plat extension that is granted tonight. Prior to obtaining a final plat, all comments from the Newton County Development Services staff, the Newton County Transportation Department, the Water Authority, environmental health as applicable, Newton County Fire Department, Georgia Soil and Water Conservation, and the U.S. Army Corps as applicable, shall be addressed. This is the location of the parcel. It's on Fairview Road. Along Fairview and Access Road is the closest cross-section. We have the gin auto sales up here, just for your bearings. And again, this is, we have our zoning map, which is R-two, Almond Overlay tier. This is the preliminary plat that was approved. The layout, these are just site photos over the previous, last year. They're showing the work that they have completed so far. These are photographs that were supplied by the applicant. It gives you an aerial of the subdivision, so this is of July of last year. And we've got the Faircliff subdivision here, Winchester Park, and of course, I-twenty, Interstate twenty over here. This is another angle from November. And of course, these are on the grounds from September through December of them working out there. And if there are any questions? If not, the applicant representative is present. Chairman.
Thank you. At this time, we're gonna go, we're gonna open up our public hearing. The applicant and those that want to speak in favor tonight, you have ten minutes to do so. You may come at this time. The applicant and those that want to speak in favor tonight have two minutes to do, ten minutes to do so. Please state your name, your address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name's Thomas Mitchell. My address is eighteen-oh-nine Beaufort Highway, Beaufort, Georgia. With me is John Nix, local county, local attorney here in Covington. I represent Covington Creek Holdings. I am going to only briefly address you, and I'd like to reserve the bulk of my time to respond to any comments that may come in opposition. The photographs that you saw last show that that property has been substantially developed. And as a matter of law, they are entitled to complete the development. The development is almost eighty percent complete. In your package, you've been given affidavits. Those affidavits outline what has been done, what has been completed, and the fact that Covington Creek Holdings has already spent three million dollars in reliance on the LDP and the preliminary plat. They had an approved LPD and an approved preliminary plat, and they began work on the LDP within weeks of that approval. The, the plans were reviewed and have been approved, and everything they've done out there has been consistent with your code and with all the other applicable regulations, the environmental regulations, and all those types of things. And as a result of the fact that they are consistent with your code and those regulations, they are requesting an extension to complete the work on an already-approved preliminary plat. They didn't delay, there wasn't a dormancy in that site. As Ms. Applewhite said, they encountered rock, and they had to do some redesign work. But the, they have, they've done that work and are entitled to be, to continue. In fact, I would tell you, they have the vested right to continue and to complete that development that is eighty percent complete. And finally, there is no benefit to the county, and there is no benefit to the public for that site to remain dormant, to be. Most of us remember what the pipe farms looked like back after the recession, and, I mean, essentially, that's the state that that development is in. It's no, there's no trees out there. It's been cleared and eighty percent complete. And as a result, I would request that you overrule the planning commission's denial of the one-year extension on the preliminary plat, and allow them to complete that work. I'm happy to answer any questions, but with that, I would just simply repeat that, that because they're in compliance with everything that you, your code requires, the state code requires, as a matter of law, they're entitled to be able to complete that work. And I would encourage you to, to vote to allow them to do that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak in favor tonight? Anyone else want to speak in favor tonight? Anyone else want to speak in favor tonight? We also allow ten minutes for those that would like to oppose tonight. You may come at this time. Please state your name and address for the record, please. Anyone would like to oppose tonight?
Again, Maya Allen Neely, District Three. I wanted to add to that, that there are residents that live directly behind this development that has complained about the foundations of their homes being destroyed. To me, before you purchase land, I would think that a survey would be done prior to. I think it was greed, and they saw that they could make the money, and they're trying to make their money back. But again, I don't think the people of District Three should have to suffer behind that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Greetings, Commissioners. My name is Thercia Hodge, that's T-H-E-R-C-I-A, H-O-D-G-E. I am a sixteen-year resident of Newton County, District Three. I opposed at the planner zoning meeting because we fought this developer. Initially, he wanted to build multifamily homes. It was approved for purchase. My neighbors found out early last year they're for rent. I speak on behalf of all my neighbors in Silver Ridge Farms that we don't want this development. They are, the first phase is at their adjoining line, along with their huge apartment complex. It's not fair for us homeowners to be surrounded by built-to-rent homes down Jack Neely, down Kirkland Road, down Crowell Road. If he can lessen those homes, not seventy-one, and make them for purchase, maybe you can approve, but not rentals. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
My name's Sabrina Moore, and I'm at one-twenty Faircliff Drive. And she spoke about the, the homes that's directly behind it, that's me. And I, along with my other neighbor, well, I myself, I have already suffered damage to my foundation. So, I say no to this whole development.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Please state your name, your address for the record, please.
Yes, Alaina Sanders. She leads Initiative Government Affairs Director. As I mentioned, in two thousand twenty-one, when we voted for this project, the applicant came before us to build two hundred homes. It was denied, and I asked the question, were any of these homes going to be rentals? We were told no. They were approved to build fifty, and then later on, it was increased to about seventy-some homes that turned into be rentals. And so, across the street, they put the remainder, which became smart, very smart, business-oriented, and they put the remainder, which should have been fifty, and it was increased to seventy-one. And so, we've had residents who have had blasting their windows and everything. These should not be built. For one, they were told that these homes were going to be purchase homes and not rental. That's a problem as well as with our ordinances. That's a problem that people are coming up here stating that they're going to be building homes for purchase, and then later on, they become rentals. This should not be approved.
Anyone else? Please state your name, your address for the record, please, sir.
Good evening. My name's Tim Nguyen. I live at thirty-five-ten Fairview Road. So, I live directly in front of this project.
And like all the rest of the people that live in a, in a direct proximity to this, we've had damage to our homes from the equipment and the blasting for sure. Another real interesting thing now, this developer should have surveyed this land. His lack of planning should not be the cause of more pain and suffering for us. There's plenty of visible rock that was on that land before it was ever touched with one piece of bulldozer or any type of clearing equipment. And he ran into rock and there's a bunch of rock back there. But his lack of planning should not be, you know, a problem for the rest of the county and the citizens. Another thing, they haven't done any work. Not one piece of equipment has been on that, that property since January of 2024. They have not done any work this year at all. I talked to the contractor, the contractor said they weren't getting paid. I don't know how true that is, that's not my problem. But according to contractor, the developer wasn't paying them, they stopped work and that's why there hasn't been any more work done on that property. I'd just say, you know, there's a lot of issues with this, this should not be approved. And especially the rental parts should not be approved. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Dave Norton of New Bern. Once again, there is no one here, a citizen, speaking in favor of a project. Please note that. A lot of us are being called complainers, we complain about everything. If we're complainers, there should be someone on the other side that's approved of it, someone in favor of it. But yet we have seen no one. One time in the past year have I seen someone in favor of such project as this. Please note that, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you. Billy Andrews, 70 Brown, Brown Thrasher Run, Oxford, just up the road. Just wanted to bear a witness to a project like this before, prior to coming over here, I was in Henry County and I lived in the south side of Stockbridge in addition to Eagles Landing over by Rock Cory Road. So I can give you firsthand testament of what rock blasting will do to the foundation of homes in that area, the neighborhood. So I would just like to, you know, back and give affirmation to the statements that are happening here that homes will be damaged if they use blasting, if you will. I've witnessed pipes, foundations, cracks and everything like that from Henry County. Also, the land survey, I was listening to them in the back, that's a definite, that should have been done. So they should have found rock during the survey and that survey may have failed them, but that's still not an excuse to continue a project that's going to damage homes that are already established.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? Thank you. I'm going to, I'm sure you want to come back up for your remaining time. We're going to open that back up.
The developer has complied with the, your code and the regulations. When it comes to the type of work that they have been doing on that site, there are requirements for what, for how it's been done. And there's been no citations, there has been no, nothing indicating any kind of enforcement action against the developer for anything that they've been doing on that site. The work that has been going on in the past year is the work to address the rock and that is a different contractor. A lot of the rock work in terms of removing it from the ground has been completed. There are still piles of rock out there that need to be crushed and removed or distributed, but that's the work to be done. At the end of the day, what essentially this particular appeal is about is property rights. The owner has an approved land development permit, he has an approved preliminary plat. He has done what staff has told him, he has complied with your code. And as a matter of law, he's entitled to finish that. He has invested over $3 million, paid, paid $3 million, has incurred another $1 million. The affidavits before you outline all of that. There's a, there's a, there's an exhibit to one of those affidavits that show you how those funds have been incurred. So he's got what the law calls investment-backed expectations to be able to complete the work that he has done. A lot of the things that the folks, I, I, and I understand the, the, the concerns that the, of the folks that came up here. But a lot of the things they're talking about are either issues that can be addressed by, with code violations and there aren't any, or should have been addressed in the zoning process or as one lady pointed out, in, in your own, in the, in Newton County's codes. The property is zoned for what it is or for the use that's being done. The preliminary plat shows 71 lots under the current zoning and it's been, it, it's 80% done. And all that he is requesting and what he is in fact entitled to is a one-year extension on that, to complete the work on that preliminary plat. The, there's, there's no benefit to just leaving that site vacant. It, it, it's, it's been cleared. A lot of the infrastructure has been put in. The only things remaining to be done are to complete crushing and removing the rock, do the fine grading and then install the water service lines so that the curb and gutter. I mean, that's how close this is to completion. And if he, and if the, and frankly, if the, if the commission refuses to give them, give the developer the extension, then you, the, the county deprives him of that $3 million he's invested and the opportunity to build on a site that's 80% complete. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but that's, that's essentially where we, where we sit tonight.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else want to speak in favor tonight? Well, it's still open. Anyone else want to speak in favor tonight? That portion is now closed. Ms. Applewhite, if you will, please come on up. Sir, you can stay. There may be some questions for you. Commissioner Lindsay.
Yes. Ms. Applewhite, can you walk me through?
Can you turn your mic on for me, please? Thank you.
It is on.
Okay.
Can you hear? Can you walk me through the timeline? I know that I have in the packet that they got approved for the preliminary plat in 2022. That's correct? And so to make sure that everybody understands what the process is, is a 24-month period of time that they have to do all of the grading and everything that they need to get to a point where they can issue a final or submit a final plat?
Yes, they have to actually have an approved final plat within the 24 months or the preliminary plat will expire.
Okay. Now, in 2022, do you know at what point there was an issue with the rock?
They, let me get, just one second. So the preliminary plat, we issued it in September of 2022, that was at the end of, also the end of the year. And then in February is when, February 3rd is when they got the land disturbance permit issued. And that would have been the time when they would have started the groundwork to discover that. So it was during 2023 when the fire department issued them the permit for the rock blasting.
Okay, but slow down because I want to make sure I understand this. In 2022 in September is when they applied for the preliminary plat?
It was approved by the planning commission, yes.
And then you mentioned the February date. What happened between September and February?
They more likely were preparing their land disturbance plans to be submitted.
How long does that typically take?
We issued the permit, actually, let me correct that. We issued the permit after reviewing it in, on February, February 3rd.
Okay, how long does it take, how long does it typically take for somebody to do a land disturbance permit application?
The review process every, we have 30 days to do the initial review. And if there are any updates, it will be returned to them. So they submitted their LDP on October 27th of 2022. So the plat was approved in September, they submitted their LDP the following month.
Okay, so they submitted it within 30 days, little over 30 days, and then they got an approval from you guys in February of 2023?
That is correct.
Okay, and then after February 23, what happened? What, were you informed of anything that was going on with this project that led to a delay?
The fire department and speaking with them, they told us that they had issued, they issued the developer a permit to do the rock blasting because they had encountered significant rock out there. I also have my staff that would have done their periodic inspections.
But before you get to that, when was it that the fire department issued the permit to allow the, the rock blasting?
I do not have that date with me, that precise date.
Does anybody know?
I know that they mobilized the rock removal in July and August, so.
Of 2023?
Of 2023. The redesign work began as soon as they encountered it and then the, the, they mobilized the equipment there that summer. So presumably the permit to do that would have been issued sometime about that time.
Okay, so when the permit was issued, at what point was the rock blasting complete?
I don't have an exact date for that, but it happened during the, I know in September 12th of 2023, they did a revision of the land disturbance permit plans after they encountered that problem. They had to do some adjustments to the detention pond because of the areas that they had to blast out as well. So they were still working on it as, as far as September in 2023.
Okay, what happened after September 23? Because we have someone that says that there was no work at all done in 2024. Do you know of anything?
We have inspections that were conducted that show that they were doing work out there.
Okay, so you have, you have documentation of inspections that were done in 2024?
We do.
Do you have a documentation in terms of right there in front of you?
I, not in front of me, I didn't print the inspections.
Do you have any idea of how many inspections were done in 2024?
I can't give a number offhand, but I can provide that information to the board as needed.
Do you guys know whether or not, what inspections were done in 2024? Because I'm assuming, and I may be wrong, but I'm assuming if there were inspections, that mean that there was work that was done that had to be submitted for inspection?
Correct.
Okay. Off the top of your head, do you recall if there was more than three inspections done in 2024?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. So in 2024, there was work that was done and I, this application for the extension happened in September 2024?
Request for, I'm saying it again, please.
The request for the extension was in September of 2024?
That is correct. So they requested the extension in September. It was heard, you know, by the planning commission in October, November, and then we're here today.
Okay. The preliminary plat that was approved, I'm assuming, but just to be clear, every single aspect of that preliminary plat matched what the zoning laws were at the time that they submitted the application?
It did, from every department that did their review, they met the requirements of the ordinance at that time.
And they were in full compliance?
They were.
Can I ask Patrick a question or do I have to wait till another time to ask him? Patrick, let me ask you this. Can you, can you explain as simply as you can what the standard is for approval of a preliminary plat?
Yeah, I can. In simplest terms, in the Newton County UDO currently, the standard for granting a preliminary plat is basically this. If the plat submitted by the property owner or the developer complies with the zoning ordinance, then they're entitled to the issuance of a preliminary plat. That's in simplest terms.
So that means that it's not, it's not discretionary?
That's correct.
Okay, and when I say not discretionary, that means that as long as all these checkboxes are checked, then you have to approve the plat?
That, that would be correct.
Okay. All right. As it relates to the extension, because we already got to the point where they are approved for the plat, they've asked for an extension. Can you tell us what will happen? Because I hear you on the property rights. I hear you. I hear them too. And I hear me too, because I'm in the district. What is the definition or can you explain what vested rights are?
So that's a, that's a little harder to do simply. I'll try to do it as simply as I can. Vested rights is a term of art in the, the legal world that generally refer, refers to a constitutional right to utilize property for a specific purpose. You gain vested rights by doing a number of things. Generally, acting in reliance upon a properly issued permit is, is one of the things that grants you vested rights. Spending money on, on a properly issued permit or on a properly given official assurance that you will get a permit, that would be the type of thing that would grant you vested rights. And what vested rights do is once you have achieved, once you have achieved the level of vested rights, your, your rights vest. You, you have the right to continue that project. And that's why you see subdivisions happen in phases. So like a five or six-phase subdivision, once that preliminary plat is approved for all five or six phases, they're locked into that. They, they, they aren't stuck with a change in the rezoning or a change in the development regulations. They get to rely upon the rules that were in place when they got their permit.
Okay, so we're talking about an extension now. We're not talking about a preliminary plat application. Do vested rights apply to extensions of preliminary plaques?
Yes, I would, I would suggest to you that's the reason they exist.
Okay.
Yeah, the reason they exist is to ensure generally that a developer can complete a project once begun, provided that the project was, was undertaken in compliance with your zone.
What happens, if you can answer this question, if we deny this extension that they've asked for, taken in consideration the interest that the public has already stated, taken in consideration. I think one of the gentlemen had mentioned public health, safety and welfare. These are all good arguments, but as it relates to what happens when the person has vested rights and they're denied an extension for a preliminary plat in which they have invested rights to proceed on it?
So I'm going to answer that question by comparing a typical zoning lawsuit and a typical suit that arises from a permit denial. A typical lawsuit challenging a zoning denial would, the, the legal issues for the court to decide are the, the balancing the interests. Balancing the government's interest in preserving health, safety, welfare, community standards, things like that, which you do through your zoning ordinance. And the court in a zoning suit balances those against the property owner's right to make use of his property. So there's a balancing test involved.
And before you go forward, that balancing test would include all the things that were mentioned by the individuals that talked up, like public safety?
Yes.
Welfare and all that? That's for zoning?
That's generally the, the, what we're talking about when we talk about public interest. And that happens at the, at the zoning stage or in a zoning lawsuit. I, I, I can say this because I know Mr. Nix and Mr. Mitchell know this as well. I'm not, they're not hearing anything from me that they don't already know. In a typical lawsuit challenging the refusal to grant a preliminary plat, when the property complies with the current zoning, the balancing of interest is no longer the issue. The issue becomes a technical review, for lack of a better description, of whether or not the permit when issued was issued properly. If the, if the, if the plan, if the preliminary plan was properly issued and the property did in fact comply with the zoning. And there is nothing in the zoning ordinance that, that expressly calls for revoking, not, not an expiration, but a revocation for, you know, failing to comply with something. At that point, typically a judge rules without consideration of the public health, safety and welfare. So it, it becomes more or less a technical review of your zoning ordinance and the plan to, to determine compliance with the zoning ordinance. And under our zoning ordinance, the extension of And under our zoning ordinance, the extension of the plan is evaluated the same way the plan is. There, there's really no, there are no other standards for an extension of a plan.
And, and I hear what you're saying, but to make it very plain, is it my understanding, what you're saying is that if we deny this extension, then we're gonna end up in litigation, and the litigation is likely not gonna go in our favor?
Well, let me, let me say a couple of things. Um, it, it is my job to defend whatever decision the board makes. Okay, so I, I, I defend whatever decision the board makes. Um, and I'm gonna say this in general terms, applied generally, not specifically to, to this instance. But if there is an instance in which the board denies a preliminary plan when the plan conforms in all respects to your zoning ordinances, the, the ability to successfully defend that lawsuit is, is, is remote. You can achieve a delay, uh, that delay comes with a cost, obviously, you know, there's, there's fees, there's expenses. Um, and, and when I say delay, I don't mean the unreasonable delay that lawyers impose upon us, just the general time it takes to litigate a lawsuit. Um, typically, so in zoning lawsuits, it is exceedingly rare for a property owner to win a damage award. It is, it is extraordinarily rare in a zoning challenge. In a challenge to a permit, it is not as rare, because a property owner can show, I had a right to do this, because that right was denied. If a property owner can prove that they suffered financial harm, sometimes it's hard to do that, there is a potential for them to receive an award of damages. If the denial of a permit is just outrageous, if there's absolutely no basis for it, you would run a risk, probably not a huge risk, but a risk of, of suffering an adverse attorney fees award, which mean, in addition to paying me, you would have to reimburse the property owner their attorney fees. That's not something I would count on getting if I was a property owner, but it could.
Commissioner?
Go ahead.
We gotta get a motion on the floor before we go into discussion. We gotta get a motion on the floor. Three options.
I understand, I know what the options are. Okay, um, I don't have a hard time saying no when I need to. But it's more difficult to say yes when you don't want to. And I don't want to. But we have an obligation, and the obligation that we have is, like he said earlier, public health, safety, and welfare. But that obligation is only applied to enacting zoning laws. As it relates to the decisions that we make on this board, we have to act in the best interest of the county, period. And while I do not want to say this yes, I am obligated to do so. So I'm going to motion to overrule the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision to deny the preliminary plat extension, because that is in the best interest of the county. And I want to also add that we have to aggressively address our zoning laws as we move forward. I know that's not a part of it, but I wanna make sure that, that people understand that. We have an oath, and that oath says that we have an obligation, not only to the people, but to the state constitution and US constitution.
Hold on for one second. Uh, deputies, if y'all could help me, uh, keep order. Guys, I'm asking again, we don't, we don't, this is, this is a business meeting, we're gonna make sure we treat it like that. So if you could, can, remain from talking, we greatly appreciate it. Go ahead, ma'am.
I was gonna say that the oath that we have taken to do these jobs, not only an oath to the citizens of Newton County, but it's also an oath to adhere to the state and US constitution. And with that being said, I would reiterate that I am going to motion to overrule the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision to deny the preliminary plat extension, because that is in the best interest of Newton County.
Is there a second?
Chairman, just one minute, please, um, could that be approval to include the recommendations as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been motion by Commissioner Lindsey and second by Commissioner Mason, is there any discussion, Commissioner Long?
I've got a few questions for you. If we're eighty percent into this project, why do we need another twelve months?
Because, because of the encounter of the rock, and so that they had to, that, that prompted them to have to spend extra time.
But you said we're eighty percent.
Correct, what remains to be done is the fine grading.
Excuse me, hold on one second, sir. Ma'am, I'm gonna ask you one more time, can you please refrain from speaking in the board meeting, please? Thank you, sir, go ahead.
What remains to be done, the other twenty percent is to remove the remaining rock from the site, the piles of rock that are out there, do the fine grading work that's necessary for, to do, to do the paving and the curb and gutter, and install the water service lines. Everything else has been done, but those things couldn't be done until the rock was addressed, and that's what they've been trying to do.
Okay. Uh, my question's for Sheena. Um, when this property was originally zoned, um, was it zoned for the seventy-one dwellings? And, or what kind of dwellings are these, was it zoned for? It looks like it says R two here, single-family residential, is that what we're still building here, or something changed?
No, it is zone R two, single-family residential, they are building single-family homes.
Single-family homes is what they're building, all right? And then, um, and then was it presented that it was going to be purchase and sale? Was it, what was it presented? Because the community seems to think that things have changed, so, and since we're this board, some of us are newer. I mean, I remember being in the room, but I cannot remember exactly what was presented in that zoning.
Uh, when the project initially came in, when they did Covington Creek, which is, um, across the road, they initially were told that they were owner occupied. They were going to be, that was the intention, for them to be owner occupied. And, um, you know, of course, we learned at a later date, once that project was completed, the Covington Creek, uh, that, you know, they were rentals. Um, you know, as mentioned before, the rentals is not something that ordinance regulates, um.
But we're gonna put that in the new one, right? All right, um, okay, that was my question, is what's changed? Because the community keeps, keeps talking about changes, and, and, and I wanted to know from, from, from these people, you know, why? Was it changed? Did we present something that is not true? Did we present something that's currently not what it is at this point? So that's what was my question.
And I believe, I'm, I'm so sorry, Chairman.
Go ahead.
I have an information alone, also asked a question previously, why the twelve months? That also takes into account the review time for the final plat, because they have to have that approved within the twelve months as well.
Thank you, I got Commissioner Mason and then Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So with the whole rental piece, um, and we've seen developers come before us, um, are, or, we, as the developer, are you willing? Uh, and we've seen developers come in and do this. Are you willing to put that in the initial covenant and make that as a recommendation that these are not going to be rental homes?
I mean, because of, because of the market conditions, and what, and the, and the situation, and, and what the code says, and the fact that we comply with the code, I'm not prepared to stand up here tonight and, and do that. That, that's something that, that, again, going back to what was discussed earlier, if that had been done at the zoning standpoint, at the zoning stage, or if, as it sounds like, you are gonna mend your, um, uniformed development ordinance to include those kinds of restrictions, then perhaps that would be something that we could do. But at, at the preliminary plat stage, uh, under, under the laws, I understand, it is just not proper to, and, and to impose those types of conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Miss Lee. Question that, I, I guess I have, I have two questions. Uh, the fir- first question is, is the planning, and I guess it's to Ms. Appleweight, did the planning commission, were, were they aware of the suspension, and what, what did they say?
Yes, this was taken to the planning commission back in October, and then again in November. And they denied the extension. And the concerns cited were, um, that they were gonna be rental properties. They were concerned of the effect of the values of the single-family, the owner-occupied homes that are neighboring them. Um, I think I had them on the PowerPoint here, so I can give you an accurate. Right, so there was rentals, and there were concerns regarding the density, and of course, the rock blasting that occurred earlier in the project. And then, of course, um, you know, they expressed that the U D O is currently being updated right now as well. So those are some of the reasons that they expressed concern for the extension of the plat.
Yes, ma'am. And there was a reason why we have a planning commission, to kind of look at it first and give us a recommendation
Correct.
of how they feel, excuse me, and for the, also as well as the community. In District Three, how they feel, and what they would like for us to maybe consider. Lastly, the second is, and I'll be through, is that, uh, no, we, uh, we didn't approve the board members. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, somebody helped me, was my planning commission member, was she one of the people being recommended, um, that, that was for approval?
What's her name, is it, um?
Um, Ms., um, let me think of a name.
Mayor? Yeah, yeah. Yeah, she's approved.
Okay, fine.
I'm sorry, you finished?
One, 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 one quick thing. I, I understand, though people live there, I don't, I don't live over there, and they have to endure the blasting and the other stuff that they may be doing, and the fact that the, um, the planning commission sided with the residents of District Three. Then who am I to deny them that? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I have a question.
Commissioner Lindsey?
I have a few questions. There is a planning and zoning commission that makes the decision. Is the staff in a position to recommend a ruling to the planning and zoning?
Staff does make a recommendation, and.
And what was the staff's recommendation in this case?
Staff recommended approval of the extension.
So the, the staff that was hired by the county, looked at all of this information, looked at all the information that was provided from the departments, and made a recommendation for the preliminary plat extension to be approved?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have for right now.
It was motion, um, by Commissioner Lindsey, and I think second by Commissioner Mason. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Well, let me, and did you say one more thing? No, okay, that's fine.
All in favor? Any opposed? Pass three-two?
Those are all the petitions for this evening, Chairman.
Thank you all. Thank you. We're gonna revert back to Mr., um, John Sterder, please.
Oh, yeah, I do, I do.
We're back on item number ten, please.
All right. You ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, all right, so I'm not familiar with the public.
Guys, we are still in our, um, meeting tonight, if you can, please refrain from talking.
All right, so I'm not familiar with the Public Facilities Authority, but I had an opportunity to read the old law and what the proposals are. Um, I see that in Section Five, the recommendation was to, um, replace it in its entirety, and it looks like the most significant change is that there's an omission of for any other political subdivision from the new version. Is there a particular reason why that has been offered as a change?
I, I, I couldn't hear you, say that again.
I said, is there a particular reason that that has been offered as a change? It looks like for Section Five, the, the main change for Section Five is the removal of, for any other political subdivision. So the original, uh, included that, but the revision omits that. So the provision, revision says, no such revenue bonds shall be issued to finance a project for the Newton County School District or any other municipal cor- um, corporation within Newton County without the approval of the Board of Commissioners of Newton County.
Right.
But the original says, or any other subdivision, political subdivision, or municipal corporation of the state located within Newton County. So I'm guessing, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out what was the reason for that change.
Right, so it was, it was really just to, to focus it on what we anticipate doing with the Public Facilities Authority.
Okay.
And the reason that language is there is you could, over time, appoint a third party, third, a, an independent authority board. And we don't want you to give them free rein. We wanna make sure that whatever they do ultimately, if it, if it is for the purpose of any entity other than the county, must come to, before the Board of Commissioners approve. But it was, that change was really made, it was, it was an intentional decision to focus it on municipalities and school districts.
Just to focus on municipalities and the county?
And the school district.
And, I'm sorry, just, okay. Are, are there any other authorities that we have that actually can issue revenue bonds?
Well, you can, uh, the Board of Commissioners can, and, um, but the, the problem in most instances is you aren't receiving revenue from a particular project. And the revenue bond law prohibits, doesn't prohibit, but it excludes kind of your typical government functions. So the purpose of the revenue bond law is kind of to finance other things, things that are more on the periphery of your government. So you, you don't really use a revenue bond law to finance like your nine-one-one center, because that's a typical government function. So it's really there to, to finance sort of the, the odd project that you're undertaking. Maybe you're, you know, an airport that generates revenue, that would be something you, you might issue a revenue bond for.
And I know that we're making these corrections, I guess, to expand some of the powers of this particular authority. Um, but I also noticed that the section on the members, it's five members that are on this particular authority. And when I was inquiring about it, I was told that as a board member, you have to be on there. But based upon what I'm looking at, you can do appointments, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct, you, you're not required to be on there, but that's how, that's how we've done it here to ensure sort of the, it's, I don't like to use the word control, but it's, it's, it's almost a direct oversight. You, you, by you serving on the Public Facilities Authority, there's no risk of it undertaking projects that the Board of Commissioners doesn't want to see happen.
Okay. Is it possible for us, since we're already fixing this or amending it, is it possible to incorporate in Section Two, um, some community input? So instead of having five members, have maybe seven members and two members be from the community? Is there a way to change that at the same time, so that we can have oversight also from the community?
Uh, yes, you, we could, we could make that revision if that's one the board wishes to make.
Because right now.
I will say this, um, the, the only con, it's more of a practical concern I would have is we will typically, when the board, when the Public Facilities Authority needs to act, which isn't, isn't routine, it, it's fairly uncommon. But we would typically convene a meeting immediately before, or even simultaneously with the Board of Commissioners meeting. I don't wanna do anything that would slow your ability to have the authority meet, function, and act. Um, but if, if that's something that's important to the board, we can certainly.
I understand. That's all I have.
Anyone else? Anyone else? I seek a motion, please. Oh, yeah, that's right, I'm sorry. Any more discussion, I'm sorry? Any more discussion, all in favor? They pass the five-o? Thank you, sir. Next? Go ahead.
It's okay, Chairman, we're at item number twelve, and it is the alcohol license and twenty-twenty-five renewals. Um, that's located on the last page of your agenda packet, but we do have a final reading, Chairman.
Thank you, um, let's do the alcohol license first. Thank you. Um, let's do the alcohol license first. The renewals, yeah. So Patrick, all the, all of them are getting stunned.
That's right.
All right, so I seek a motion, please. We're doing the renewals. Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Next, um, wait, I'm sorry.
Chairman, we have the final reading from Marathon Food Mart, twenty-five, twenty-seven, Highway eighty-one South, Covington, Georgia, three zero zero one six, licensee amid Budwani, District Two.
Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and there were no incidents or issues. It's all clear. Okay, thank you. So I'd like to make a motion or move that we approve the final reading for Marathon Food Mart, twenty-five, twenty-seven, Highway eighty-one South, Covington, Georgia, three zero zero one six.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner Edwards. It's been motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Uh, next on the agenda is citizens' comments. This opportunity will allow citizens to make comments. Uh, you may come. You have three minutes to do so. Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Dave Norton of New Bern again. Earlier in the U D O meeting, our commissioner from District Two mentioned we need to be growing, not dying. Newton County and Covington are within an hour of a major hub of the United States, of the southeast, within an hour of the busiest airport in the world. Newton County and Covington will never die. This is not Americas or Albany or Plains. Newton County will never die. Uh, also, our District Three Commissioner mentioned, I may not have this correct, about a prohibition towards multi-density housing and all, uh, in District Three. I have mentioned this before. If we do the two-acre minimum as is in required in the Alcoa watershed countywide, then you, even at a one acre, then you eliminate a lot of the high-density possibilities. Also, I've been informed that tomorrow night's U D O meeting will involve public involvement, but the Board of Commissioners is not required to be up here sitting in the horseshoe. But I would ask, if you don't have prior commitments, come join us and sit in the seats back here and listen to what your constituents have to say on the U D O. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Please state your name and address. Happy New Years. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. I am Reverend Sharon Collins and I reside in Fairview Estates subdivision. Um, I am very, very pleased about the new board and I'm very optimistic that we are going to see some changes and some things happening in growth. However, I want to make it public record that Fairview Park has finally really hit us really bad. We have asked for cameras, fences, all these other things that we were promised, and it didn't happen. We were sued and they're asking for one million dollars. We made the board aware of it and we got no support. That park belongs to Newton County. So we are negotiating. Regardless, we will have to settle. We are in the process of settling, but how much I don't know. But we're hurt about that. We're sad, we're scared, we're concerned that if this was able to be negotiated and agreed upon, who else can come to us? We, we have, um, assessments that our homeowners pay every month. And we try to have at least thirteen activities for them. We're in the process of possibly having to raise their assessments. Losing homeowners that were vested in the community, that love the community. We have built, paid thousands of dollars for fence for ourselves out of our pockets. But something has to be done. And I can't say for sure, but I say allegedly, the persons that sued us, it could have possibly been some type of nefarious deal that happened at night and they had no business being in the park. We have no control over that. As a matter of fact, our homeowners association or the company that, um, oversees us says we can't even hire security because then if something happens with security, then we're liable for that as well. So all I'm asking you all to do is please take into consideration the citizens of or the homeowners of Fairview Estates. It's just not right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And by the way, um, Commissioner Lindsay has spoken with me and our board and she has committed to doing some things about it. But I just needed to say this because it's been over a year, maybe two years, that we were told there were changes going to be made and there were not. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Frederick Johnson, ten thirty-six, Highway one sixty-two. Uh, Commissioner, back in two thousand twenty-one, May the fourth, one of your meetings, you said that we was going to realign Moat Road to, to one sixty-two. Nothing, never been done. I never seen any stops or anything or, or whatsoever. So I'm going to continue to remind you of it. Now, if possible, if we could get the traffic slowed down a little bit there around our church, that would be a big help right there. Anytime we're having a funeral or if we're having, uh, a big crowd, I mean, we catch the blues trying to get out, you know, the people, they just, just go by there running sixty-five and seventy miles an hour. If we could just get the, get the speed limit slowed down a little bit or traffic count or whatever, you know, so let's think about that. But that, I, I thought I'd make mention of all of this, but what I stood up for, you know, King's celebration is due, is going to be on the nineteenth, uh, of, of this, this month. And on the twentieth, normally on King's birthday, we try to clean off some cemeteries. This year I have, uh, I'm hoping that the weather will be suitable where we can do that this year. And, uh, I've earmarked four different cemeteries. I don't know if we're going to be able to get the volunteers out or what, but anyway, we're going, we're going, going to be working on one down on one sixty-two at Twin Rivers subdivision. There's a cemetery right beside the road that nobody never touched, you know. A few years ago, we worked on one inside of that subdivision, a little small cemetery. I think it was one grave in there, but it had rolled up. We're going to work on that one again also. And there's another one, uh, down at, uh, Aaron Parker Cemetery. I've worked on it, uh, several years ago. We'll go back down there and work on that one, uh, hopefully, if I get the help. And there's another one down at, uh, let's see, where was it? The Santee Bluff. It's on, uh, Alcoa Reserve, uh, road. That's going out two thirteen just before you get to the river there, that subdivision on the right, right there, all the way to the back end. So we're planning on doing, you know, working on these four. But I'm going to need some help and several, uh, several of the, uh, Laura Burson them, they have promised me, you know, they'd get me some, some volunteers. So I have no idea how many volunteers we'll get. The young lady out at, uh, Georgia State University, she called me this morning and they, they wants to help have some volunteers.
Thank you, sir.
So I have no idea how many volunteers we'll get. Don't have no idea how many people we're going to get.
Thank, thank you, sir.
So we just go from there. So we normally try to, uh, you know, have some refreshments for them.
Thank, thank you, sir.
So y'all can help me out there. You know how to get in touch with me. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
And by the way, we're going to meet out at, at-
Thank you, sir.
Newton County High School, Newton County High School at nine o'clock.
We, we-
We're going to depart from there at nine thirty.
Thank you, sir. Got you, sir. Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Commissioners. My sole purpose actually coming tonight was in regards to House Bill five eighty-one, which was passed through the referendum in November twenty-twenty-four. I raised this issue with the board before the referendum was even on the ballot. And bringing it up again because it passed, even the residents in Newton County passed this bill. Yet despite the communication, we still have not heard anything definite from the board regarding the next step. There is a process per the bill if you plan on opting out. To add to the complexity, there were suggestions from certain school board members about the school board opting out of this measure. As you know, the school tax is one of the highest taxes that we pay here in Newton County in conjunction with the high property values. If all entities, including the county, city, and school board decides to opt out of this bill, how would it implement or how would it affect House Bill five eighty-one when the residents of Newton County pass the bill? While it's true that the mileage rate was rolled back in twenty-twenty-four and some of the residents, it felt like just a photo op because we still had to post an increase. This kind of message leaves residents frustrated and wondering if our concerns are truly addressed. So tonight, I am once again asking for transparency and leadership. What is the board's plan for House Bill five eighty-one? Will you commit to implementing this bill? Or will you be like some of the entities opting out? What is the process? There is a three-step process before you can decide to opt out and you have to hear from the public. We do have a sixty million dollar surplus minus the one million that we took from the budget from a two-to-one vote during the budget season. So my, I'm asking you now, in reference to all other residents of Newton County, what is your plan for the House Bill five eighty-one? Because this is tax relief where you cannot increase property taxes more than two percent a year. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
Reeds, again, Commissioners. My name is Thosia Hodge. I am a District Three resident of Newton County, also the Board Secretary for Silver Ridge Farms. Tonight, the plat that was approved was based on outdated zoning ordinances. This is why we are currently in a moratorium to update the ordinances. We have a problem of mass development, especially on the west side of Newton Co, Newton County. I live it every day. The issue of mass development was a hot topic and a candidate now seated in a District Three seat says she can fix it. However, tonight, she motioned to approve it for the county, not the committee, and this will contribute to the mass development. Arrest my case.
Anyone else? Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr., Mr. Johnson, you didn't leave, did you? Um, I wanted you to know, Moat Road, the county manager informed me Moat Road is on the twenty-twenty-five project list. So it's only took me seven years to get something done, so, but we're working on it. Thank you. Uh, Happy New Year to everybody and welcome to our new members. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I was going to say to, um, Deacon Johnson as well, I have a couple of organizations, um, because you had mentioned to us before that, um, you were going to be doing the cemetery cleanup. So I'm affiliated with a couple of organizations, uh, as of last year. And so I've told them about the cemetery cleanup and so I am working to also get you some additional volunteers, uh, along that timeframe as well. So I'll be reaching out to you soon in regards to that. Uh, and I just wanted to say, uh, Happy New Year to everybody and welcome our new Commissioner colleagues. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Um, Commissioner Henderson. Commissioner Henderson. Come on, guys, we do have executive session. Commissioner Henderson. I got it.
Thank you. Um, I, I just, I just want to say this. It was a very good Christmas. Uh, we managed to give out, um, if you want to do more, give out, uh, it was around about fifty bicycles, brand-new bicycles. We hadn't intended to do it, but the, uh, outpour of people who wanted to help somebody who may, uh, needed a bike, especially a child. We, uh, we also, uh, worked with another organization to give out meals to the homeless and, uh, over across, uh, from Roses, over in the parking lot. And, you know, I typically, you know, saying that we would get together and give out food and stuff like that and that, that's all good because there's, there's definitely a need of, of people who need help, I mean, real help. And we should all work together, try to help them if we can or do what we can. We are, we are in a, a very difficult time here at, as a county. And, uh, we need to work more together than we have been working. And we need to, as best we can, be transparent. And I think that's something that, um, we've been talking about for a while. But, uh, this is the year. This is the year we're going to come together and make things better, not for just one or two or three of us, but for all of us. Because first of all, we know that's, that's what exactly what God wants us to do, is to make things better for all of his children. And, uh, that's the good news and I thank God for that news. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Let's say the, uh, the last two, the two newbies. Welcome aboard. Uh, Commissioner Lindsay, now you first, District Three.
I'm happy to be here. Um, I plan on working. People that know my reputation know that when I say I'm going to do something, I'm going to do it. I'm disappointed that there are certain people that left, but I'm glad that this is being recorded so it can be played again. We are a team. We're going to get things accomplished for District One, District Two, District Three, District Four, and District Five together. We're going to fix some of the things that have not been fixed for years because we are going to work together. So to my citizens in District Three and District One and District Two and District Four and District Five, you best believe we're going to get some great things done in two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenty-seven, and two thousand twenty-eight. I need to remind everybody that I am not going to make decisions on this board for the purpose of getting re-elected. I don't care about that. I'm going to make decisions on this board that's in the best interest of the county. And I, like I do in my profession every day, am going to fight for people. I got seniors asking me for taxation relief. That is a priority to me. I have a whole entire District Three that's talking about overgrowth. I know about the overgrowth. I was here when it started. We're going to do something about it. Not Stephanie Lindsay, individual got up and said Stephanie Lindsay says she going, no. It's not Stephanie Lindsay that's going to do this. It's the Board of Commissioners that's going to do this. It's the county manager that's going to help. It's Leanne Long that's going to help. Me and J C going to be best friends, believe it or not. He, he the, he the, he is the luckiest commissioner that has ever been in this horseshoe because he gets to sit sandwiched between the vivacious Leanne Long and Stephanie Lindsay. But we're going to work because this is a business meeting that we're having here the first and the third Tuesday of the month. And we're going to handle business for this county and that ain't no t, t, t lip talk. That's a promise. And I don't make promises that I can't keep. You could bet that one hundred percent. There's a reason that I'm here and there's a reason that I had nine thousand people vote for me to be here. There's a reason Leanne had, the number she had voted for her to be here. There's a reason that the chairman had forty-something thousand people vote for him to be here. We're going to work. We going to work.
Oh, you got a minute left.
I, I have a minute and ten minutes. I have a minute and ten minutes. We're going to work. Patrick is going to work with us. We all going to work together. Patrick is gonna work with us. We all gonna work together, because we all want the same thing. We want Newton County to move forward. We want each one of these districts to move forward, and that's all I have to say, and I got fifty-five seconds left. Can I use that for the next meeting?
No, 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 ma'am. Uh, Commissioner Long.
I will be brief. Um, I just want to tell, uh, the Board, I'm happy to be here, the citizens, I'm happy to be here. Uh, my commitment to you guys and to the citizens of Newton County is a positive, productive government. Um, you know, negativity and divisiveness might make headlines, but it does not pave roads in this county. Um, it does not build communities. It does not protect our families. Um, what truly matters to us is getting the job done that we were hired to do. I am not running for reelection. Okay, I got four years here to make it right, and that's why I'm sitting here. Uh, I'm gonna be, you know, five years from now, I'm on a beach somewhere, okay? But I'm just telling you guys that I look forward to working with you. Uh, we're not gonna have this dysfunction that we've had for the last four years. That's why I ran for this seat, because I was tired of seeing it, and we're gonna all work together and get some things done, and I look forward to working with everybody here.
Thank you, ma'am. Hey, Brian. Oh, yeah. You still recording this, right? Oh, thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Guys, we do have a, have a need for executive session, but I do want to say, um, I'm so thankful, um, for the opportunity to be here, for the citizens that allowed, um, this board to be here. Um, listen, we look forward to working with you guys, and I think we'll do some great things. And, um, man, J C, twenty-seven years, twenty-eight years. Uh, I'll get it right next time, my bad. But yeah, yeah.
That's right.
Well, yeah, congratulations.
The youngest thing, the oldest thing.
Congratulations, sir. But we, can I get a motion that we move into executive session, please? And there is no need for a vote, is that correct? Yeah. So guys, we won't be coming back out and taking a vote, so if you want to leave, you can. If you want to stay around, you can. But we are in executive session. Thank you.